Good evening. This is the fifth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called a order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation, um, tonight's invocation will be led by Dias Tom Boram. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Tonight's invocation is, um, is a bit of a prayer, but it's also a, uh, an argument. So, um, I saw something that I enjoyed quite a bit at the Herschel Gallery at the Smithsonian, and it said, it was a big sign on the wall in the art gallery that said, "Faith plus doubt equals sanity." It is my contention that everything important is a shifting perspective within a paradox. Faith and doubt are both equal techniques for growth, and faith humbles us and focuses us on our hopes and dreams, and our families, and our communities, but doubt focuses us on our independence, our freedoms, and our autonomy. Humanity benefits from both. Personal visionaries, iconoclastic visionaries, people whose doubts about the status quo or the orthodox have moved the conversation forward. Faith by contrast is the glue and the heart of the community. In an age of easy skepticism and overused irony, faith is rebellious because faith is vulnerability and optimism. Once we understand that this is the truth, the right thing, and that the truth is a moving target, then we have a responsibility to allow the restructuring of faith and doubt in real time, each time one or the other isn't moving us forward or isn't working. The people of this council are a similar paradox. Leaders and servants simultaneously, like myself, a father and husband. I'm a partner and a companion, but I'm also an individual and a free mind and a free spirit. I contend that it is the challenge for the enlightened to have faith and doubt simultaneously, to be a leader and a servant, to be a responsible partner and an individual. Paradox, not orthodox, is the true nature of the universe. I have faith that we can find ourselves in a better present by being dynamic, and that doubt, and I doubt that the truth will be with us unless we embrace paradox. Thank you.
Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with living justice for. Thank you, Mr. Boram. Uh, the clerk will call the role of the members.
President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Lewis Field from the Baltimore African American Tourism Council, Inc., who has exciting information about celebrating the bicentennial birthday of Frederick Douglass.
Good afternoon, good evening. Uh, I want to first of all thank Mr. President and the Baltimore City Council for providing me this opportunity to speak this afternoon, uh, this evening on Black Herschel Mark. This is the last Monday, the last city council meeting for this year in Black Herschel Mark. And one of the things we wanted to talk about today, my group, the Baltimore African American Tourism Council, has worked with many groups throughout our city and state to honor and to remember and to share and to preserve and protect and promote the history of African Americans, their achievements and contributions. Well, this year, we're celebrating the bicentennial birthday of Frederick Douglass. He was born enslaved in Maryland in February of eighteen eighteen. So, in eighteen eighteen to twenty eighteen will be his two-hundredth year of his birthday. And in his first work, his first biography, Douglass wrote Baltimore is his adopted hometown. And that's very important as many groups across the country, uh, will be honoring Frederick Douglass in twenty eighteen. But in Baltimore, we decided to start a little earlier. So, February fourteenth is his adopted birthday. So, from February fourteenth, twenty seventeen, to February fourteenth, twenty eighteen, we in Baltimore have planned and will be planning a series of events leading up to February fourteenth, twenty eighteen. All the city council persons, including Mr. President, I left you a handout on your desk that speaks to the tours, lectures, discussions, et cetera, that we'll be having, but also know that the Frederick Douglass houses in Fells Point, Baltimore, still stand. And the good news is that our young man, Mr. Greg Morton, recently purchased the Frederick Douglass house at five twenty-four South Dallas Street. He's opening that house up for tourists. I've been doing a tour in Fells Point on Frederick Douglass for seventeen years. People from Japan, England, Africa, all over the United States have come to Baltimore and found my tour. But in seventeen years, we were never able to open the door to the house. So, thanks to Mr. Greg Morton, the door is now open. So, all the citizens of Baltimore and incoming visitors can go into the Frederick Douglass house for the first time in seventeen years. Also tonight, I want to also dedicate tonight to another Baltimorean. Many persons may not know his name, but he's internationally famous. His name is James Amos Porter. He actually passed on February twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy, some forty-seven years ago tomorrow. Mr. Porter was born in Baltimore in nineteen oh-five, December twenty-second. He's known as the father of African-American art history. He taught at Howard University for over forty years. In nineteen forty-three, he wrote a book titled, "The Negro and Martin Art," but he's not celebrated here in Baltimore as a native Baltimorean. So, one of the things I've given to the city council today is a handout that lists the top eighteen sites, in my opinion, African-American sites in our city that are on the endangered lists. We're going to ask to work with the mayor and the Baltimore City Council so we can preserve these historical sites, including the other four houses that Douglass built in Fells Point. Only one of those houses is occupied. The other four remain vacant, broken glass, all kinds of things like that. Why is that important? And I'll close with this. In this year, in twenty seventeen, Baltimore will welcome the National NAACP Conference, over ten thousand people, the National ELSE Conference, the Alpha's Conference, the Deltas are coming. We have over fifty to sixty thousand African-Americans coming to Baltimore between June and August of this year. It's important that we sort of spruce up, if you will, some of the sites along the African-American historical trail, so that our tourists, as well as our visitors, will see that we honor the achievements and the contributions of African-Americans. We're going to see that North Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue begin to look like Pratt Street. So, the tourists who come into Baltimore's Pratt Street and have a wonderful time and say how great and how fabulous it is, but then as we go from Fells Point through Caroline Street to North Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue, their experience drops off. And as a city, we now know that we have to do better in these other outlying areas. My organization is here to partner with any other group that can work towards making our tourists have a greater experience when they visit the Frederick Douglass houses, the Billie Holiday statue, the Avenue Market, all of these sites that I gave to the council today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fields, for all that you do. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation act for motion to generalize prayer. Motion by Councilman Dorsey, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal proceedings from the February sixth city council meeting is on the council members' desks.
Is the motion approved, the journal? Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently in the journal is adopted. Bill is to be introduced.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-one, Baltimore City Zoning Code Legislation Corrections for the Purpose of Legalizing New City Code Article Thirty-two as enacted by Ordinance sixteen dash five eight one and edited, codified, and published by the Baltimore City Department of Legislative Reference, further amending new Article Thirty-two to correct various technical errors, omissions, and inconsistencies, and to correct, clarify, and conform various references and language, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the zoning and development laws of the city of Baltimore. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of Department of Legislative Reference.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-two, City Streets Closing Bed of Duker Alley for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing the Bed of Duker Alley Extending Westwardly ninety-two feet, more or less, to the westernmost extremity therefore of the west side of Albemarle Street, as shown on plat three-two-three A, fifteen A, in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-three, Sale of Property MAP Seventy Grid Fourteen Parcel Nine Eight Eight in Baltimore County for the Purpose of Authorizing the Maryland City Council Baltimore to Sell at either, or, at either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property known as MAP Seventy Grid Fourteen Parcel Nine Eight Eight in Baltimore County and longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Comp Troller.
Uh, this will be, um, assigned to the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee. We'll ask the chair to wait till we get the information on why this is being sold before we move forward on this bill.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-four, Sale of Property Three-O-One Through Three-Eleven North Warwick Avenue for the Purpose of Authorizing the Maryland City Council Baltimore to Sell at either public or private sale, all its interests in certain properties known as Three-O-One to Three-Eleven North Warwick Avenue and longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Comp Troller.
This has been assigned to Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-five, City Property Renaming a Trail for the Purpose of Changing the Name of Rich Trail Located in Between the Norman Reeves Trail and the Old Spring Trail in Gwynne's Falls Leaking Park to be the Heidi Grundmann Trail. Sponsored Burnett.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-six, Baltimore City Landmark List Exteriors Chick Webb Recreation Center for the Purpose of Designating the Chick Webb Recreation Center, six-twenty-three North Eden Street, as a historical landmark exterior. Sponsored Stokes, President Young, Dorsey Cohen, Snead.
Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, I would like to recognize the Dunbar Coalition. Would you please stand, please? Dunbar Coalition? I would like to thank them because they took the lead on making sure that we recognize this building as being historic. You know, sometimes we very seldom preserve, um, look at preserving our community. Chick Webb was renowned bandleader, king of swing, and competed against Count Basie and Benny Goodman. What a better way to make Chick Webb a historic building in the month of February, Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Clark, you're a co-sponsor?
Yes.
Okay, any more co-sponsors? Sharon Green Middleton, Ryan Dorsey, Leon Pinkett, Councilman Pinkett. Can I see everybody? All council members. Okay, thank you. Uh, this has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. We'll ask the Housing Chair to, um, work with, um, Carver so that we can get this done. I know we're waiting on, uh, planning. Yeah, so, um, as quick as we can get this done, I appreciate it.
City Council Bill, um, City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-seven, Bus Lanes and Stops Prohibited Parking for the Purpose of Allowing the Department of Transportation to Designate Bus Lanes and Bus Stops on City Streets, prohibiting parking in designated bus lanes and stops, allowing for the towing of vehicles in properly marked and designated bus lanes and stops, setting certain penalties, clarifying conformed related provisions, and generally relating to bus lanes and bus stops. Sponsored Dorsey, Clark, Stokes, President Young, Henry Bullock, Scott, Pinkett, Cohen, Burnett, Snead, Schleifer.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey. Oh, please note that, uh, Councilwoman Middleton is a co-sponsor, is a co-sponsor. It's co-sponsored.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. While preparing this bill, I learned that the city has no legal definition of a bus stop per se, having never really updated the code beyond the era of the Baltimore Transit Company. So, since we effectively ripped the streetcar system out, we've not thought to, uh, that was seen fit to, to really preserve kind of the sanctity of public transit in Baltimore in that respect, doing everything that we can to deter, to deter car drivers from kind of getting in the way of its proper operation. Tens of thousands of Baltimoreans use buses every day, um, yet no reason has been seen fit to note that in our city code. Uh, this is, I think, you know, emblematically the neglect of public transit. I really want to just talk about the revenues with this for a second. Um, the current fine for parking in a, an archaically divined transit zone is only seventy-five dollars. Clearly, when in two thousand sixteen, we had six thousand and fifty-four tickets issued to cars for parked and bus stops. Um, we're not doing what we can to deter this. Uh, this bill asks to raise the fine for this to two hundred and fifty dollars. You know, this parking in bus stops not only impedes buses from operating on schedule, but it creates an unsafe environment for passengers boarding and disembarking. These tickets last year brought in four hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, uh, in revenue, and increasing the fine, you know, if it increasing in the, if increasing the fine reduces the prevalence to a third of what it is, um, you know, we'll have that much less the problem and the same exact revenue. And if it doesn't, we'll have increased our revenue to one point five million dollars a year, and, uh, that's a whole lot of best passes for city bus students that we can pay for. So, I'd ask for everybody's support on this bill.
Uh, please note that, um, Councilman Costello, Councilman Ross Singer, that's co-sponsored. This bill is assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-eight, Vehicles Obstructing Sidewalks Removal Authorized for the Purpose of Prohibiting Vehicles from Impeding the Free Flow of Pedestrians on Sidewalks Authorizing Removal of Vehicles Impeding the Free Flow of Pedestrians on Sidewalks Clarifying and Conformed Related Provisions and Generally Relating to Vehicles Obstructing Traffic. Sponsors Dorsey, Clark, Stokes, Scott, Cohen, Burnett.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you again, Mr. Council President. Um, this bill again cleans up some archaic language in the city code regarding to how we treat vehicles that are parked obstructing the public right of way, particularly on sidewalks. Uh, it allows for the immediate towing of vehicles. Um, it is cited elsewhere in the code, but this, uh, seeks to strengthen the, um, the will of enforcement to actually do something about it. This came about, uh, from my observations, it was observations of a lot of other folks at one particular business, K&amp;M Motors, where, uh, all day, every day, these business operators park multiple cars, uh, obstructing the public right of way so that any person walking down the street is forced to have no other place to walk but into the street. And I'm hoping that this helps to dissuade this behavior. Thank you again.
Thank you. Please note that Councilwoman Middleton is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to Land Use and Transportation, I mean, to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two-nine, Unidentifiable Vehicles Immediate Towing for the Purpose of Prohibiting the Parking of Unidentifiable Vehicles on City Streets Authorizing the Immediate Removal of Unidentifiable Vehicles Parked on City Streets, Setting a Certain Penalty and Generally Relating to Unidentifiable Vehicles. Sponsored Dorsey, Clark, Stokes, Henry Bullock, Costello, Scott, Pinkett, Cohen, Burnett, Snead, Riceinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you one final time, Mr. Council President. Um, this goes beyond the definition of an abandoned vehicle and creates a new distinction of a vehicle which I believe is intentionally seeking to evade citation, uh, one where the license plates have been removed and the VIN number on the vehicle has been obscured intentionally so that no citation can be issued to it, and it allows for such vehicles parked on city streets to be towed immediately. And I would thank, uh, ask, ask for everybody's support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolution introduced.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero one-zero R, Investigative Hearing Baltimore City Police Staffing, Recruitment, and Retention for the Purpose of Requesting that the Baltimore City Police Commissioner appear before the city council to brief it regarding recruitment efforts, officer retention, and recouping training dollars, report on the number of percent, report on the number and percentage of individuals that enroll in the police academy, graduate from the police academy, and are employed by the Baltimore Police Department after graduation, and discuss the retention rate of those employed by the Baltimore Police Department, the deployment of officers, and how the deployment will enable the city to curtail the rise of violent crime. Sponsored President Young, Henry Bullock, Costello, Scott, Dorsey, Pinkett, Cohen, Stokes, Burnett, Snead, Riceinger.
Um, this bill is introduced, is self-explanatory to talk about the staffing of the police department throughout the city of Baltimore, is recruitment efforts. Um, I know that they go all the way to Puerto Rico, and once they go to Puerto Rico, they can't go there and do the background investigations like they do on people from the city of Baltimore, the surrounding counties, um, and want to address the retention rate, because Baltimore City has long been the training ground for police officers who come here for a little while and then go to surrounding counties, um, after we have did all the training. So, I want to thank all my co-sponsors, and this has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution seventeen...
Please note, let's go back. Please note that Councilwoman Middleton is a co-sponsor.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero one-one R, Request for State Action Support SB One-Eight-Six and HB Two-Two-Nine for the Purpose of Calling on the General Assembly to enact and the government to sign SB One-Eight-Six and HB Two-Two-Nine or similar legislation banning the use of polystyrene foam food containers to protect melanders from the unsustainable costs these containers currently impose on our personal, environmental, and economic health. Sponsors Cohen, President Young, Henry Bullock, Scott, Dorsey, Pinkett, Burnett, Snead, Riceinger.
Please note that Councilwoman Clark is a co-sponsor. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Co, please note that Councilwoman Middleton is a co-sponsor. Please, um, Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution supports the state ban on styrene. Styrene colloquially known, colloquially known as styrofoam represents a hazard to our families and children throughout the state of Maryland. According to the NIH, styrene has been linked to increased risk of lymphoma, leukemia, and other blood cell cancers. Occupational exposure to styrene may affect the central nervous system and cause short and long-term health defects. Why then, Mr. President, are many children in Baltimore City schools eating off of styrofoam trays? Mr. President, this resolution is not anti-business. Providing an alternative to styrene is very nearly cost-neutral. I also want to be clear that this resolution does not ask Baltimore to do anything different than the rest of the state, but merely reiterates our support for some very common sense legislation. I was enlightened about this issue by two amazing young advocates, Mercedes Thompson and Claire Wagner, both from Baltimore Polytechnic High School. Together, these remarkable young women created Be More Beyond Plastic, a youth-led initiative to reduce waste in our city. They are passionate and compelling advocates who managed to convince me and many of our colleagues here today that banning styrene is the right thing to do. As you know, Mr. President, young people throughout our city often struggle to be heard and sometimes feel marginalized, but these two young women have shown us what's possible. They are not lobbyists. They don't get paid to do this. They are just concerned citizens that want our city to be healthy. I'm grateful for their work, and I ask for suspension of the rules to adopt this resolution.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspending the rules, announce to Henry, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged rules suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and if we could give a quick round of applause to our young advocates who are here with us today.
Before you, before you move for a second, Councilman Schleifer, you, you, um, co-sponsor? Okay. Now, you can go ahead.
All right.
You're moving for, um, it already been seconded by Councilman Henry.
Yep, move to suspend.
You already suspended, now you moving the bill?
To adopt. I move the resolution.
Second, you're moving the resolution, okay. Um, all those in favor of adopting Resolution seventeen dash oh-oh-one-one R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, and this resolution is adopted. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero one-two R, Request for State Action Support HB Fifteen-O-Four to Restore Full City Control Over the Baltimore City Police Department for the Purpose of Calling on the Maryland General Assembly to Enact and the Government to Sign HB Fifteen-O-Four or Similar Legislation to Remove the Baltimore City Police Department Status as an Intrumentality of the State of Maryland and Police Department Completely Under the Unstr, Unrestricted Control of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore. Sponsored Scott, Henry Clark, Bullock, Middleton, Cohen, Burnett, Schleifer, President Young, Costello, Dorsey, Pinkett, Stokes, Snead, Riceinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, uh, this resolution is in support of House Bill Fifteen-O-Four that would do something that is long overdue. Uh, the city of Baltimore is the only jurisdiction in the state of Maryland that does not have local control of its police department. Uh, this has been the way the department has been since its creation in the eighteen hundreds. Actually, at one point, uh, in eighteen sixty-one, the police department was taken over by the federal government because of our police department's action, uh, around going against the Union and even thought some police officers were in a, a conspiracy to assassinate President Lincoln. Thank God that didn't happen. But today, uh, a long time later, we, the local legislators of the Baltimore city, the people that are held responsible by the citizens and taxpayers of the city for crime, for murder, for each and everything the police department does, the people that have to pay out the four hundred and fifty million dollar budget, the people that pay out the lawsuits for when police officers do wrong or we, we settle laws in court, do not have the ability to legislate over the police department. Most people in our city do not know that. They think that we have control that we do not have. Uh, Delegate, Delegate Kirk Anderson is being very brave in doing something that would transform the way the police department is overseen in our city. And I thank all of you, since this is unanimously co-sponsored, and for those who came to the press conference today for your support, this is not about the city council wanting to meddle in police business. We simply want to be able to do what the citizens of Baltimore already think we can do and what we should be able to do. If the state were going to help us pay this four hundred and fifty million dollar budget each and every year, I think that we would be singing a different tune. If the state was a party to the consent decree with the Department of Justice that we're in for their agency that we're going to pay, we would be singing a different tune. But they're not. We pay. So, if we're going to have all the responsibility, we should have all the power. That is what this is about. This isn't about anything else other than that. Folks will tell you that this is going to negatively impact the consent decree. Well, when asked last week at a, a community forum with the No Boundaries Coalition, the Department of Justice said the opposite is true, that actually it will help with the consent decree, because one of the things mentioned in the DOJ report is that this blurred line between who's on first, who in control, and all policy that the consent decree will be reviewed on the yearly base, on a yearly basis. And one of the things, how this things, these things works is, as policy is changed, then things come out of the consent decree. If we do not change policy, then we'll be in the consent decree forever. We don't want to do that. These are the things that we need to do. We should not be at the beck and call of Annapolis in their ninety-day session to go down each and every year to get changes to our police department. No one else has to do this. In this very chamber, last year, I stood and said that we needed someone to take up the calls to allow us to remove a archaic six-year contract mandate for our police commissioner. Delegate Kirk Anderson and Senator Bill Ferguson took that up, but it spent, it took us a lot of time, and me a lot of time, being outside of Baltimore to get that passed in this very chamber. Earlier, and later in two thousand and sixteen, we asked if someone take up the task of creating a community policing committee. Delegate Antonio Hayes is doing that right now, but we shouldn't have to do that. We should be able to do that here locally. This past month, I was in Annapolis around redistricting, something that everyone in this council, some of our colleagues have voted that we should have police redistricting about four times in their time on the council, yet it has not happened. It's not going to happen, and it should not have to happen in Annapolis. No, a delegate or senator from Hartford or Washington or St. Mary's County is never going to know what we know about Baltimore police and what our police department needs to do. Therefore, the power should be for us. And with that, Mr. President, I move the suspend rule for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting Resolution seventeen dash oh-oh-one-two R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent count in section A at the back of the agenda. There's the motion to approve the consent count. Motion by, motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this count is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, I would like to extor, extend floor privileges to Eddie Marcinco to present him with a resolution.
Second by Council Vice, um, Council Vice President Middleton. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to Councilman Cohen's guests, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, your guests may take the floor.
Mr. President, Ed Marcinco Senior was an icon in Fells Point. He was a barber and a boxer. In nineteen forty-two, he won Baltimore City's amateur... a boxer. In nineteen forty-two, he won Baltimore City's amateur flyweight championship. He was also a war hero. During World War II, he received a victory medal. He was one of those people that truly make our community great. On February eighteenth, Mr. Marcinco passed away. He is survived by his three children, Eddie Junior, David and Teresa. Mr. Marcinco was fortunate to have children that loved him and took care of him during the end of his life. Both Eddie Junior and Teresa were incredibly giving and caring and providing direct assistance toward their dad. During our campaign for city council, I saw just how much Eddie Junior loved his father as he would constantly check in on him and make sure he received everything he needed. Mr. President, I'm proud to call Eddie Marcinco Junior a friend and a phenomenal community member and I want to present him with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the citizens, we thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And before, before we move to bills on second reader, I want to recognize former councilmen and former Senator Nathan Ervey who have joined us. Everyone, please stand. Everyone, please stand. Thank you. He served with distinction in the old Second Council medic district and as a longtime senator in the forty-fifth district. So I just wanted to recognize him. I never got the opportunity to do such. We'll now move to bills on second reader, Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero 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 two, City Property Naming the Park Located at nineteen hundred through twenty-one hundred Mount Royal Terrace, Lady Baltimore Park. For the purpose of naming the park located nineteen hundred through twenty-one hundred Mount Royal Terrace, Lady Baltimore Park.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on February twenty-first. I know that Councilwoman Clark used to represent the area and you introduced this bill, Mr. President, so I defer to either of you before moving the bill favorable if you'd like.
I did it as a, as a favor for the former councilman and talked to Councilman Pinkett who had no issues with this bill. So you can just move the bill and we can give a second unless you want to speak, Councilman Clark. Thank you.
Move the bill favorable?
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero one seven, Building Fire and Related Codes, International Residential Code Corrections. For the purpose of expressly continuing the regulation of solar photovoltaic power systems for all one and two family dwellings and expressly reinstating the application of certain regulations governing driveways and other paved surfaces for all one and two family dwellings.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Solar photovoltaic power systems or solar panels, for those of us who don't know what that is. We had a hearing on February twenty-first and pass this, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two zero, Building Code Demolition Permit Fees. For the purpose of modifying the maximum permit fee for the demolition of structures.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Held a hearing on February twenty-first. Bill passed committee. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves the third reader. Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill sixteen dash zero 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 one, Sale of Property Eight twenty-three through eight twenty-five North Mount Street. For the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property located at eight twenty-three through eight twenty-five North, North Mount Street and no longer need for public use and providing for special effective date.
Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on February sixteenth, twenty seventeen, and the property is being purchased by the adjoining property owner, the new Mount Zion Baptist Church, which has maintained the property for over twenty-five years. The committee finds this favorable.
Second by, that would be Councilman Pinkett, right?
Bullock.
I mean, Councilman Bullock. Second by Councilman Bullock, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero one two, Sale of Property Two seventeen North Pine Street. For the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property known as Two seventeen North Pine Street and no longer need for public use and providing for special effective date.
Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Middleton.
This bill was also heard on February sixteenth, twenty seventeen. It's in the eleventh district. The lot is currently being used as a parking lot. The University of Maryland is interested in purchasing the property. Please move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bills seventeen dash zero zero one three, Sale of Property Nine oh seven and a half North Fremont Avenue. For the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property known as Nine oh seven and a half North Fremont Avenue and no longer need for public use and providing for a special effective date.
Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Middleton.
This bill was also heard on February sixteenth, twenty seventeen, ninth, ninth district. The property lies adjacent to properties owned by the Macedona Baptist Church, which is interested in the lot. Please move the bill favorable as reported.
Second by Councilman Bullock, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero one four, Sale of Property WS Scott Street, ninety-four feet North Carroll Street. For the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property known as WS Scott Street, ninety-four feet North Carroll Street and no longer need for public use and providing for a special effective date.
Chair of the Council, Vice President Middleton.
This bill was also heard on February sixteenth, twenty sixteen. It's in the tenth district. Pig Town Main Street Incorporated is interested in purchasing the property and the bill, please move the bill favorable as reported.
Second by Councilman Ross Singer, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves the third reader. Third reader for final passes.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero 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 four, Railway Franchise Consent to Transfer. For the purpose of acknowledging the Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail LLC has sought the consent of the Maryland City Council Baltimore to transfer of the authority to exercise the franchise formerly held by the Washington-Baltimore-Annapolis Railroad in accordance with PSC Order Number eight seven two four eight in case nine three six three granting consent for BWRR to exercise the franchise formerly held by the Washington-Baltimore-Annapolis Railroad and generally leading to the transfer of a certain railway franchise. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero 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 nine, Supplemental State Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, three million dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplemental state fund operating appropriation in the amount of three million dollars, Department of Public Works, Service seven three zero to provide funding for the installation of combined heat and power at the Back River Wastewater Treatment Plant and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero one zero, Supplemental State Fund Operating Appropriation, Law Department, five hundred seventy thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplemental state fund operating appropriation in the amount of five hundred seventy thousand dollars to the Law Department, Service eight six one to provide funding for technology purchases by the Central Bureau of Investigation to allow remote data collection and migration to a paperless office, which will improve information management, reduce existing costs and risk for the city and improve operating efficiency and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Scott, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero one one, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer MR Employees Retirement Contribution to Fire Department, four million one hundred nine thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars. For the purpose of transferring a general fund operating appropriation in the amount of four million one hundred nine thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars from MR Employees Retirement Contribution to the Fire Department and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Clark.
Whoops, excuse me. Mr. President, members of the council, I would like to announce that one of our wonderful colleagues, between the times we've met, got married. And that's Marguerite Murray, now Curran.
Councilwoman, you have to wait till committee announcements. I mean, this is committee announcement?
Oh, my goodness.
You have to wait till regular announcements.
I'm sorry. I'd like, yes, well, let's just say that this was scheduled. I apologize to you. I'm so excited about this wedding. I was like the same way with all my daughters. Okay, I'll wait my turn.
Okay. Chair of the Council, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to announce that on Thursday, March thirtieth, at two PM in council chambers, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be having an investigative hearing into the effect of the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Affairs, Urban Development's Distressed Asset Sale Program on Baltimore City. We will, we've already invited individuals, representatives from Oak Tree Capital and Celine Finance. We do recognize that this has an impact on Baltimore City homeowners resulting in both foreclosures and evictions and may have the unfortunate circumstances adding to blight and vacancy in Baltimore City. Thank you.
No, no apology, Mr. President. The Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing with Bill seventeen dash zero zero one five on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, at one PM in the council chambers. This is a planned unit development. The designation is the Fox Building. Also, the committee will hold a hearing with Bill seventeen dash zero zero one six on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, at one fifteen PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning bill. It's conditional use conversion, conversion of a one dwelling unit to dwelling unit and one efficiency dwelling unit in the R eight zoning district located at twenty-eight twenty-three Huntington Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be hearing Bill sixteen dash zero 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 three, City Property Renaming Oliver Community Center Playground to Calvin B. Scruggs Senior Playground on Tuesday, March seventh, at eleven AM. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be hearing Bill seventeen dash zero 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 six, Real Estate Practices Disclosures for Industrial Railroad and Truck Operations on Tuesday, March seventh, at eleven oh five AM. And the Budget and Appropriations Committee will be holding a legislative oversight hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, at two PM to discuss pending legislation for the minimum wage with representatives from the budget, or the Bureau of Budget and Management and Research, as well as Baltimore City Public School System. This is being done under the authority of Legislative Oversight seventeen dash zero 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 eight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council President. On Wednesday, March first, two thousand and seventeen, beginning at five PM, the Labor Committee will hold a televised hearing for Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero one eight, the Labor and Employment City Minimum Wage. And if needed, the committee will reconvene the hearing on the next day, which will be Thursday, March second, two thousand and seventeen, at one PM in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the fam, family. Mr. President, this is really your presentation. I just wanted to say how happy I am personally, on behalf of my colleagues here, our, our colleagues, for Marguerite Murray Curran. Yay, Marguerite. And she kind of tried to sneak in this wedding between our meetings and we just couldn't let that happen. Mr. President, I, I turn this over to you to congratulate Ms. Murray, Mrs. Curran, whichever or both.
Well, I want to offer my congratulations as well. I've been knowing her for many, many years. Used to watch her run by my house. Almost every morning I could tell, or every evening I could tell what time it was because she was always on time. And I just want to congratulate you. And Council Vice President Middleton will read the resolution, but we want to congratulate you.
Congratulations, congratulations, Marguerite. The City Council Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Marguerite M. Curran with an I. In recognition, in recognition of your special union to Joseph Curran on February tenth, twenty seventeen, and your commitment to each other in marriage by providing a positive model to others of the importance of family. May you have a lifetime of joy and happiness together. Congratulations. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on this twenty-seventh day of February twenty seventeen, signed by President Bernard Jack C. Young and all members of the council. Congratulations and best of luck and God bless you and your family.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
You could never, you could never get rid of the Currans. We'll always have a Curran in here, whether it's a I or U.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hate to break up the, the laughter in the room, but I rise to say that as of the beginning of our meeting, fifty-two people in the city of Baltimore have lost their lives to homicide this year. And I ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for each of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Middleton.
The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, March sixth, twenty seventeen, and we're going to have a moment of silence for all the people that have, and families have, that have lost lives. Thank you.
Thank you. There has been no further business. This concludes the fifth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.